I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much for your attention to that. Next up on our agenda this evening would be the mayor's report, and man, it's a good report. These are fun ones. We've got a lot of great things happening right now in the city of Dayton, Kentucky. First of all, I think member Keller already mentioned, we had a very successful fall festival right there in Memorial Park. It was the last Saturday, Sunday?
Two weeks.
Yeah, Saturday?
Yeah.
And it was packed, like lots of music, lots of crafts, lots of fun, kids were having good times. So just a big thanks to the volunteers that made those things happen, and I can't wait to see what next year does. This week is going to be a very exciting week, starting off first with Wednesday. At 1:00 PM, right over here at Gillan Park, at 1:00 PM, we're going to have a ribbon cutting. And that ribbon cutting is going to be a celebration of a lot of successes that we've had this year in Gillan Park, including the resurfacing of the basketball courts, of course, the Gaga Ball Pit, who could ever forget that? We also have a brand-new playset for the children down there coming out of Lincoln Elementary, and the pickleball courts, which I believe, Mr. Horton, how are those being used already?
We've had people there beating the fence down, actually, to play.
Good, so tomorrow's the official opening for that. I'm glad everybody got to use it a little bit early.
Yes, the soft opening has been very successful.
Excellent, so we've got a lot to celebrate tomorrow at 1:00 PM. If you're not busy, come by and celebrate with us. And then, but we ain't done yet, Thursday at 4 o'clock, we have the groundbreaking for Phase 3 of
Two and Three.
Two and, I'm sorry, Jay, Two and Three of Riverfront Commons. So we have Riverfront Commons, they're going to be breaking ground down there on the riverfront and putting down the biking, hiking trail path. That's going to connect the last piece for Dayton's connection. And last, but certainly not least, don't forget, if you are of age, and we don't card anybody, the senior luncheon will be Monday at noon at the VFW.
Eleven.
Thank you, ma'am, and that's why I have a great team. And so come on by, let us serve you lunch, and have some food and fun. So like I said, this was a fun marriage report, so I'm happy to give it to you. But that's all I got. So next up is the approval of minutes, so if anybody would like to make a motion to approve the minutes for September 9th and 30th, 2025.
So moved.
Member Neary's made the movement.
I'll second.
Member Horton's made the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Next up on the docket would be the presentation. First, we have a presentation by the Dayton Senior High School class. Mr. Wolf.
Sir, good evening, everybody. I just want to thank you for allowing our seniors to be here. I am greatly appreciative of Mr. Fawcett, Mr. Baker, Ms. Klein, and Mr. Burks. I got that correct, Jared, Mr. Burks, yes. Just of our partnership over the last year and a half, it's been wonderful to meet with them every other month. I know a couple of weeks ago, we had our joint meeting, last February, March, we had our LES Student Council meet with Jay and Ben, and they approached me, maybe a month or two ago, and just said, hey, what if we had some seniors give a presentation to the city council just about what they would like to see in the city? And so any opportunity that I can find, that's one of the things that I really want to do, is look for opportunities and experiences for our kids. And so for them to be able to stand in front of you and share their ideas and suggestions, I just want to thank you for that. They're a little nervous, understandably so. But I'm super proud of this group. So we do have a small, last year, we had 70 students graduate. From Dayton High School, this year, we're only at 41, 42. Just works out in the numbers, there's only 13 boys, the rest are girls. So when I went to all the seniors and asked who could present, we actually had eight girls that were really interested. Turns out, one of those young ladies happens to be out of town. She practiced and worked with us, but she's out of town with her family for fall break, getting home this evening. And one of those ladies plays volleyball, and Dayton High School has a volleyball game this evening. So I've got six wonderful young ladies, all who will graduate with a minimum of 24 college credit hours from Gateway, and are just absolutely phenomenal individuals. So I thank you so much for allowing them to bend your ear for a minute, and I encourage you, they're not going to like this, but I encourage you to ask questions to them. And I told them I wouldn't let them hang, and I'll help them out if they need help, but I encourage you to ask questions. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf.
This is the class of 2026's presentation to the city council. I'm Haley McVeigh.
And I'm Brooklyn Anso.
Here are the questions we were chose to answer. What kind of city do we as seniors want to live in? Things we want to see happen in the city? And how can the city make changes so people want to continue living in Dayton? Here is what we already love. One of the things we appreciate about Dayton is how walkable the city is. Everything is within a short distance, like the schools, parks, local shops, and restaurants. This makes it easy for students and families to stay active, connect, and enjoy what the community has to offer. Another thing we love is the flood wall. It's not only a beautiful place, but it's also peaceful, and it's a great way to spend time. It provides access to nearby restaurants, stores, and this area attracts people from surrounding cities like Bellevue and Newport. This helps bring more people into Dayton.
Some things we also love is how close-knit our community is and the memories that it holds. Our community is super close, as everyone knows everybody, and we each help each other out when we can. With this, as everybody knows everyone, it's much more common to see people having more closer friends in the city and being able to hang out more. Some of, with these memories, there's more held in restaurants and parks and different events held around in the city. Some events would be Light Up Dayton, seeing all the Christmas lights go on. Fall Fest, which helps the little kids get their face painted, paint pumpkin, or even going around and helping little small businesses with their vendors. Memorial Day Parade is a huge one, that's been a very big tradition for as long as I can remember. Yoga, which helps out with the older people or some young adults. And finally, Final Friday, you will have the bands or anything else playing at the Monument Park. Speaking of parks, A Main Park, Gillan Park, holds many memories to me and some of my classmates here. As we go to Lincoln and now at the high school, we had recess or even fun time to go play at Gillan Park with our friends or family, or just hanging out outside of school. I'm glad to see it being renovated and being put still to good use, so that these new kids could have more memories to hold. Me and my classmates divided these recommendations that we now have into four categories. Local activities, improved safety, park and public areas, and stuff we would like to see in 15 to 20 years.
I'm Faith Kelly. Right now, most of our money is spent outside of Dayton, but we have some ideas on how to change that. Some local activities people want to see. Pools, water fountains, more fast-food restaurants, small movie theaters or walking theaters. Stage open mic nights, which could be for band and school choirs in a local garden. These could help improve our community, people living in Dayton.
I'm Jaden Sumler, and I'm here to talk about improved safety. I think safety is one of the most important things that people look for when they're looking for somewhere to live. I think more streetlights and lights in parking lots would be very useful. It's really scary at night, and lights in alleyways would be very helpful. I also think dog parks and pet-friendly zones are a huge thing for safety, so they're not running around causing trouble. I also think less of a focus on alcohol will make a huge difference. For example, as soon as you walk into Dayton, you see a huge liquor store, and the said liquor store says, "Huge varieties, verities, and we serves cold liquors," in quotation marks. I don't think it's a good representation of who we are as a community. I also think we should put a fence around the playground area and not the whole park. It looks really open, and it makes us look more inclusive.
We are.
If you keep it just around the playground area, it still keeps kids safe and protected.
I'm Nikki Hauser.
And I'm Natalie Stidham, and we're going to be talking about our parks and our public areas. We love our parks and our public spaces, but there are just some minor changes that could be fixed or added, such as adding free Wi-Fi to these parks and our public spaces. Students can use this opportunity to help them with their homework if their space is chaotic or they can't focus. If there's something going at home, they can use this opportunity to help them. If they are at a cafe or these restaurants, they're more likely to spend their money there instead of driving somewhere else like Chick-fil-A or Starbucks, and then drive back just to focus on their homework.
We would also like to implement guidelines for playground equipment. Most of us know how much energy kids have, so what better way to spend that energy than go to Gillan Park? Currently, the equipment's being renovated, and I, me, everyone else believes guidelines for the playground equipment would better help for kids who don't know how to use it, for kids who are reckless and use the equipment inappropriately.
Another thing we could add is a sand volleyball court. When I get out of school, or if I'm walking around Dayton, I usually see a lot of littler kids at the park. And very rarely do I see teenagers, and normally, they're playing basketball, and that could be very intimidating for some other kids to go play or try to make friends. So I think adding this volleyball court, along with the already-added pickleball court, will bring in teenagers and young adults, and it could help strengthen this community and make more friendships.
We would also like to open the restaurant at Gillan Park. Having nowhere to go can be a struggle for many, especially kids who are still body-trained or others with bladder or bowel issues. When I go to Gillan, I usually go to the bathroom, but it turns out to be closed. Having it open would make it accessible and easy for everyone around. In 20 years, we would like to see more grocery stores. A recent one turned into a liquor store, and for people with mobility issues, they would usually have to pay for an Uber or order online to get stuff like fresh produce or IG products. Having more grocery stores around Dayton would mean more people would stay close and spend here. We would also like more ramps. As the city of Dayton expands, people with disabilities need access to get from here and there. With more ramps, we would see more diversity within the community.
Lastly, adding public art. Right now, we don't have that much public art. We have a mural where the bridge is for the seniors, and that represents us, like as a senior class. But I think if, we think if we add more, it would make us look more alive and less dull, such as maybe a mural on an exposed wall of Hansmann's, or painting the alleyways to look less scary. I walk home a lot, and I normally walk through alleyways, and it is very scary to walk through sometimes. So I think painting them, it would distract you from the thought of it being scary. And when other schools drive through Dayton to play our team, like on our football field or our gym, they would be able to see these murals and see how we can come together to create art. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. Do you have any questions?
Boy, do I. First of all, that's amazing.
Good job.
The courage you guys have to stand up in front of city council and talk to us is just great. You guys are awesome. Thank you for doing that. A lot of these questions, I had the same question at council, don't let me bogart the time here. But public art is one of the things, that's why, the reason I'm up here. I got into an argument about murals. And the mural that we had that says Dayton over on Sixth Avenue next to the municipal lot, that was, that's because I got mad that there was no public art. So that's why I ran for city council, that's why, you know, a lot of us got really upset and excited at the same time to run for city council. I know Ms. Neiman was in the same way back in the day. So yeah, let's continue that, let's do more, let's do bigger things. I really like that a lot. Wi-Fi in parks, that's
We do have a little bit, we were trying to get Wi-Fi in the Monument Park, but Jared, I don't know, did that happen or not? Monument Park, there is some there, but we could do other parks as well. We just need to work with Altifiber to get that space. We could actually do it in Sargent Park, we have an Altifiber access there, so that's an easy one, we can make that available. So that's a good idea, we'll work on that.
So you, you said questions, so where else in the city, because you see a lot of stuff that I probably don't. Where else in the city would you think would be good for public art?
I would say on, like Hansmann's, that one exposed wall.
The gray one, yeah.
Yes, that right there would be a good idea, or like on the side of Wayfair Tavern, like that, like open wall, that would also be a really good spot.
All right, I think Hansmann's is probably going to be receptive to that idea. I think they'd be cool with that.
I want to address the restroom situation, we're aware of that, and I'm sure you guys are aware that people vandalize the bathrooms, so do you guys have any suggestions of what we can do as a council to make sure that the restaurants, restrooms are accessible for you guys in a way that we can keep kids from vandalizing it, so, because that costs the taxpayers money? So, I mean, I'm sure you guys can understand, like, the more money we have to put into repairing the bathrooms, that's why they're unaccessible for you guys, but we want to keep them open, I'm sure, as a council, I think we want to keep them open. But is, can you guys come up with some kind of ideas that we can implement to make sure that the bathrooms can stay open for you guys at more times?
I think maybe more security, so you know the last person to be in there, and then they can handle the consequences of what they chose to do, so it doesn't affect everyone.
We actually have security cameras there, we caught the two young people who did the vandalism, so they are now going through the court system because of that, so. So I think that those cameras will help us cut down the vandalism a little bit.
So are you comfortable reopening it then, now that you caught this?
They're open now.
Okay, and keeping them open?
They were only closed when we were cleaning them up or when they were damaged, and we do close them in the wintertime, but most of the time, we try to keep them open. They do shut them off at night, and they come back and open them up in the morning.
Could we have them on a regular schedule so that they know, she said she goes to the bathroom before she goes, you know?
I mean, generally, they're shut down when the park is closed at dark, and they reopen in the morning, so generally, they're open.
So that's the everyday schedule?
Yeah.
Coming from now?
Yeah.
So we're trying on that, it makes sense. If you have to use a restroom when you're down there, the closest one is going to be on the avenue. So, you know, we got to make sure that's available.
So a couple of things you talked about is local gardens, I don't know if you realize, we do have local garden that the city has over on Fourth Avenue. We just started, we had one on Third Avenue, but we moved it to Fourth Avenue this year, so you and your families can grow vegetables there, it's no cost, we have water, you can water them. So we just started that this year, so that's good, so we do have that. We are, there is going to be a fence, we took the fence down to build the new playground equipment. That old rusty fence is gone, and we're going to put a brand-new fence that matches what you have at the football field, and that should be installed the next month. So there is going to be a fence along Green Terrible Drive, so that's a good thing. There is some signage already at the playground, look at it and let me know if you think it needs anything additional. But when, there are signs about not being on the outside of the slides, and also, there's a little sign that kind of has rules. If you think we need other additional signage, let us know that, we'll look at that. One thing I did want to say is that this was a great presentation, and you all did a great job. So every spring, the city council has what they call a strategic planning session. They come in here, and we spend a whole day on a Saturday talking about where we want to see the city go. So I'm thinking, this next spring, let's bring your presentation, show them that, so when we're making our decisions and we base our budget, the taxpayer money comes in, what, how we spend that, they make priorities, and we can look at these and see how those priorities fit into what they want to do. So I think that's a great idea, we'll look at that spring. I think that's all I got.
Yeah, I mean, activating the alleys is something that has come up in our strategic planning, it just wasn't anything that had gotten towards the top of the list, but now that we have your information, it lets us know that that is something that's more important to the community.
I painted a mural on the side of my garage, it's a dolphin acorn, I don't know if you've ever seen it? No, you're welcome to stop by. Every now and then, I catch some kids taking pictures outside of it, I'm like, yeah. But I love art in the alleys, I think they're a lively space, I can understand the scariness of it. That's why I painted a dolphin acorn there, but I think that's great, I love your art ideas, I really love that.
Nothing good happens after midnight, so you should be home and not in any alleys.
And you're going to be, in the next couple of years, I mean, you're seniors, some of you may be going to other places, whether to college or moving to another town or whatever. Carry that Dayton pride with you, it's really a great place to grow up and to live. As you go to these other places and come back to visit or even stay here, keep your eyes open to what other places are doing that we could apply here. The bumpouts is a good example that we did on the avenue for traffic calming and pedestrian safety. If you see something in another city, even, don't wait till you graduate, bring it to anybody on council or administration, hey, this would be cool here, could we do it here, and why? There are financial limitations, obviously, but bring back those ideas. We want, we want people like you staying here or moving back here when you're done with college.
And to piggyback what Joe's saying, we want you guys to sit where we're sitting now. So we want you guys to make the decisions, to go off, use the 24 credit hours that you have, expand your education, travel the world, and then come back to Dayton, because Dayton is a great city, and we're making it for you guys. We're building the next generation for you guys to have, have something even better than what we're having now.
I want to thank you for coming, because I know most adults in this town are terrified to come up to that podium where their throats close, and I, hardly anybody ever comes here. And we get very little feedback, usually through emails or anybody attending, this is an amazing turnout right here, you know? So no matter where you end up, I think you should always feel like you have every right, education, whatever, to run for city council, to demand answers from city council, from the administration, in politics, no matter where you end up living, it's yours. And it's very easy to get that feeling that you're, you don't have a right to speak, you're not educated enough, you didn't do the right, blah, 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 it's all yours, all the time, your whole life. So please feel free to come here at any time or anywhere that you end up, go to those meetings, they're yours.
Yeah, and I'll echo all the thoughts and comments that the council and the mayor and administration have said so far. I love all the things you said about what you enjoy about the city, all the different recommendations on how to improve the city. One thing I want to double-click into is the, you mentioned the sand volleyball court. So we have a lot of sports options already, adding a sand volleyball court, I think, is another great addition to that, so that's a great idea. But I wanted to pick your brains on what are your thoughts on organized sports versus just having an open park, open setting type thing? Would you, would you, would people your age be interested at all in either helping to organize, helping to run, or helping to participate in any organized sports? Outside of what you're doing for your schools?
I know a lot of people in, especially in our grade, that actually suggested the volleyball court. And they're really interested in, like, putting in the work to make it happen.
So sand volleyball is the number-one choice, is what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
Okay, good deal. So in doing so, they're doing organized sand volleyball, or just having it open for the public?
I'd say open to the public, because it's not just like, you know, it's all age groups that I feel like would enjoy it.
Okay. All right, and my second question, marketing. So how well do you think the city is doing overall with marketing the events that they have going on in the city? Marketing themselves, marketing to outside of the city, those types of things? Any thoughts on overall marketing of the city itself?
Or does that cross your mind?
I don't really see any marketing, like, because I feel like it's such a small town, everyone in Dayton already, like, knows everything somehow, so it gets to us one way or another.
Do you go on Facebook?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you check the city page on Facebook?
I check the high school one.
Okay.
Awesome, but the last thing I'll say is, wow, you guys did a fantastic job, I didn't know what to expect coming into this, so thank you for all that you did, it's obvious that you guys prepared, so thank you for that.
I hope you can come back.
Please.
And sort of, you know, maybe every couple of months or something, give us a rundown of, like, how we responded to what they brought, more things they've heard or thought of.
Well, I understand government does move slow accordingly. So your request for a sand volleyball, may not happen next week, but like Mr. Fawcett said, we'll talk about it in the spring, maybe we can do it in the summer or whatever.
So this council approves a budget every year, so our budget starts in July 1st. So they've already approved all the major capital expenditures, like what's going on in the park. We spent over half a million dollars on the improvements in the park this year, which is amazing. We have, we are lucky, we have a park tax here in this city, not many cities have that, and people pay money into that to improve our parks, so we've been really lucky. We've had some additional developments, we're having a little bit more money than we've had in the past to do the kind of improvements we're making, so, but it takes a year, basically. So once they approve a budget, then we have a year to accomplish the things that they approve. Next year, if you have a big idea you want, come back and talk to them about it, so they put that in the budget.
And I'll echo Ms. Neiman's comments. This is your city, this isn't, I mean, this is our city too, but this is your city. So if you have any problems, any questions, any concerns, any ideas and wants, we want to hear them. We want to hear all those, the good and the bad and the ugly, so please, don't be afraid of us, we're just your neighbors. You'll see us at Hansmann's, you'll see us at Hometown, you'll see us poking around town. Talk to us, and let's hear your problems and your wants. You guys are great.
Now you can breathe.
I saw, I was driving down, dang it.
Sixth.
No, no, no.
Fairfield.
It's the street right next to my house, it goes up the hill, it's not a fountain.
Urban Terrors.
Thank you so much, I was lost for words there the other day, and I saw that they were doing the tangled mural underneath the River Trestle, or the River Trestle. That's amazing, that's such a great tradition you guys do, so thanks for keeping that up. Anything else regarding Dayton High School senior class? All right, next up on the docket, keeping with the educational idea in Dayton, we are very welcomed to have the presentation by Educate NKY regarding our Read Ready Dayton program.
Good evening, Mayor Baker, members of the city council. My name is Shai Calvo, I'm the president and CEO of Educate NKY, which is a regional nonprofit focused on, you know, elevating outcomes for students and families in our region with a focus on the river cities. And on the night that you are hearing from your high school seniors, it's exciting to come in and honor you and support your efforts to support your youngest learners. I'm joined by Chuck Session, our board vice chair, and Jenny Watson, who's the vice president of Early Learning and Family Power for Educate NKY. And we are here tonight because your leadership with Read Ready Dayton, in part, you know, the fact that you are leaning into your youngest learners to help in partnership with the school board and superintendent Rick Wolf elevate your kindergarten readiness. board and Superintendent Rick Wolf elevate your kindergarten readiness. You're already above the state average, I think you're 51 to a state average of 48. But, you know, you know, we can't accept that only half of our five-year-olds make it to kindergarten ready. And so we are here to honor you with a presentation for a planning grant of $12,000 to the city of Dayton for and this is, like I said, is a planning grant, which means we are putting resources behind the launch of Read Ready Dayton in conjunction with your neighboring municipalities. But our hope is that you all, you know, are able to put together a robust plan in partnership with your schools and your nonprofits and the libraries and all the community activities. And from that plan, many great ideas can come and we can help direct and come back with bigger checks with, for the resources to actually make Dayton a place where every kid is learning and growing and, and thriving and is ready to take their seat at Lincoln Elementary School when they arrive at the age of five. And so with that, we're just excited to be here. We'd love to get a photo with the big check. The whole point of a big check is a good photo. So if we can get the mayor and the city council to sort of join us in one quick photo and then we're out of your hair.
Never in our hair. Especially when you bring the big check. Are you going to do the flags background? A mural of the seal, I love the idea.
And that money is going to be applied how? Just as a clarification? I guess that's a question for a city administration?
Yeah, so right now, we don't know. So we're getting, we're very early stages of this program. So we're putting together our, our local team. And once we get together, they're basically saying it's up to us to kind of decide how you want to use that. But in Covington, they used it, or they had these signs around town that had a picture of a truck. And it said truck and it had it in Spanish and it had it in English. So I don't know what we're going to do, but right now, we don't know. And until we get our team together and figure that out, right? Come up here and, you know more about this program than anybody, so why don't you talk about it?
Hello again, yes, that's a great question. And I think now we're at a stage where we, we organize with a local team. I actually emailed the leadership here today just to kind of talk about who is it from the city that should be kind of the liaison, the representatives? It could be many, many people will do the same. I know Superintendent Wolf has some ideas with his team he wants to put on the committee as well as any influential or kind of maybe leaders, parent leaders and the community leaders. So we'll just form that, that committee and then we kind of do an asset map and figure out what's kind of already, what are we already have in place? And then we'll look at, okay, what can we elevate? You know, so I think last time I talked about the Footsteps to Brilliance app that Jay mentioned, we have alignment with Dolly Partner Imagination Library. So that has moved forward now where every baby born in Edgewood Hospital now get it, it's enrolled before they leave the hospital. So that's been kind of a coordinated effort between our local libraries, Boone, Kenton and Campbell, who are contributing financially to that, as well as the partnership with St. Elizabeth Nurses in the postpartum unit. So that's one, but there's many, many others. So that's where that power of the local sense of place comes in because we want to use the assets here in Dayton and elevate those. So to be determined.
Okay. Thank you.
The next step, the next, the next point of action is to organize?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, and the emails are gone, have gone out on that. We're going to get that team in place and we could start organizing virtually as early as within the next week or so.
And, and I encourage that team, whoever that is, to use best practices from all the other places around the area, but also to do better than all the other cities in the area.
I like it, healthy competition.
Because we want to be better than all, all the rest of them. And, and think big too. So it's, we just heard from the students hearing that they want to hear, see more art, more murals in the area. Is there a way we can combine those things? So I encourage people to think outside the box on that.
Maybe I nominate you to be on the team. Yes, so, but that's the idea, right? Taking what you hear in the community and then saying, how can we apply that? And this grant money will help do that. All right? Thank you all so much.
Thank you so much for what you guys do for the region, not just Dayton, but the region, although I'm with you, beat everybody. Thank you, Shai and team. Next on our docket for the evening, we are going to open up the podium for anybody from the public who has comments regarding legislative items on tonight's agenda. So again, this is just tonight's agenda. So if you want to talk about tonight's agenda, podium's yours. All right, I don't see anybody rushing the stage, so we'll go ahead and close that. Next on the docket would be any ordinances we have coming up. Ms. Klein, do we have any ordinances tonight?
Not tonight, sir.
Who's disappointed?
Not me.
Not you? All right, so there are no ordinances for this evening. However, order resolutions, we might have one of those, including, but not limited to, Order Resolution 2025-29 Romeo. Ms. Klein, please.
An order resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a cost share agreement with sanitation district number one for stormwater system improvements on River Point Drive to address stormwater pooling and runoff issues on that street.
So we've been working with the homeowners association in River Point for a year, maybe two years now. They have an area where the water pools and freezes and becomes really dangerous, especially in the wintertime. So we've been working with them and SD1 about a solution to that. So similar to what we did on Grand Park, we've reached out to SD1. They have this cost share program, public-private cost share. And like we did with Grand Park, in that case was individual residents contributed some of the money because it's improvements on the private property. In this case, the HOA is going to contribute some money, $5,000 of the total cost. And the total cost is around 15,000, I think it's 15? Can't remember, let's see here. So we are going to pay about 7,500. And SD1 share is going to be about 12, $12,500. So it's a 24, $25,000 project. So they're going to go, give us 5,000, we're going to contribute 7,500, and SD1's going to contribute the rest. So that will improve that project, problem they have there and hopefully will, I think it will, and, and we'll be able to move on to our next SD1 project. The good thing about these projects now, SD1's changed the dynamics. It used to be that it was 50% from them and only, and we would have to pay 50%. Now they've changed it and if the project is really severe, they're agreeing to pay more than 50%. So I think we have a project coming up next month, they're going to pay 75% of all the costs down on Walnut, Third and Fourth, where we've had some flooding issues. So that's, that's a good thing for us. They're putting more, and we're paying that. We pay a stormwater fee, so that fee money that we send to SD1 now comes back to us to deal with these issues. So that's what this is about.
Thank you, Mr. Fawcett.
So this is really a bad design issue. The initial design on this was incorrect.
Interestingly, for some reason, this street, instead of, it's crowned in the middle and the cost of the water to go there, oh no, I'm sorry, it's not, it's not crowned in the middle, it is actually just the opposite. Most streets are crowned in the middle, it goes to the middle. But for some reason, the way it was designed and the way they laid the concrete, it just pulls right, right there on the edge of the curb. So what we're going to do is take it down over the hill and put it into the stormwater stream that's going down to Dayton Pike. That should solve the problem.
And I know this is what the developer was put in 15, 20 years ago, if not longer. And we didn't have a city engineer at that time to go over these kind of things.
So he's the one that designed this, so it should, should address the issue. I think it was interesting, I think it's a cost was done for, value engineered, you have to, you have fewer sewer inlets when you're doing it like in the middle instead of on the side. So I think it's more a value and engineered decision and that's why we have the issue.
Do we have a motion to accept Order Resolution 2025-29 Romeo?
I'll make that motion.
Remember Neiman's made, Neiman's made that motion about a second?
One second.
Remember Kelly's made a second? Any other questions, comments or concerns to administration regarding this? Roll call, please.
Member Kelly?
Aye.
Member Judd?
Aye.
Member Lovins?
Aye.
Member Horton?
Aye.
Member Neary?
Aye.
Member Neiman?
Aye.
Any ayes have it? That, that concludes the order resolutions for the evening. Council meeting's moving on swimmingly, I believe, which brings up our department heads reports. And then tonight, I believe, the chief of the fire department is on PTO. So in order to make sure these guys are ready to run the truck if they need so, I'd like to welcome Mr. Knight to the stand, sir.
All right, thanks for having us. So yes, Chief Schaefer is out of town and we're going to present his monthly meeting. As most of you know me, and for those who don't, I'm Lieutenant Knight, here with Captain Scott. So getting right into this, so we responded to 186 responses this month of September. We had 57 fire calls and we had 129 EMS runs for training. We have a total of 1,983 hours for the year and that's an average of 107 hours per member at the department. You have, I guess, everybody was emailed this or has a copy of this. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them, but I will always refer to Chief Schaefer when he gets back.
Gary, this is time here when, when we have a lot of people wanting to do bonfires. What are the rules again, so people know?
Uh, bonfires, so you have to have a commercial grade fire pit with a screen around it, you know, something you get from Lowe's with a screen that encapsulates it and a fire retarder, a spark retarder that goes on the top. So it's pretty much completely encapsulated. We do not normally allow, you know, your, your rocks, you know, bonfire type unless you get a burn permit and we'll come out to the site and inspect it. And the fire department issues them for one day, for a 24-hour time limit.
So if I have my, my screen thing, I buy at Lowe's, any nights fine. If I have my rocks, I have to have a burn permit? All right. I have neither.
Say what?
I have neither, so I'm good.
So, so yeah, so when you, when you come and get a burn permit, you sign a piece of paper and it has all the rules and it has, you know, everything that you're allowed and what you're not allowed to do. The weather has to be right, you know, you have to be outside of, I think it's May to October is the EPA has a no burn. So even if you come get a burn permit, we don't issue them during that time, so.
And we posted something on the website, I mean, on the website, I think, and also on the Facebook page too.
Yeah, and we, we carry copies in the truck, so if we do make a call, you know, we'll, we'll tell them to put it out and then we'll also hand them that, be like, hey.
Here's your pamphlet.
For future reference, like this is, this is what you're allowed because some, some people aren't happy, as you can imagine.
What's the retardant on the top? Is it, you mean like something to squirt?
What? The lid.
Oh, the lid?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's the, the, the technical term is called a spark retarder.
Okay.
Now what about, what about a solo stove? Very popular, those solo stoves.
Um, I, I, because it's a manufactured way.
But it doesn't have a lid typically, or smokeless.
So, so you, if you buy it from Lowe's, it has to be, you have to use it as manufactured specifications. So we, we allow those.
What about Home Depot?
We do not do special favors for anybody, sorry.
Appreciate that about you.
Yeah, yeah, safety checks, safety drive bys. Yeah.
No, I'm just checking the laws because it's, it's a public forum.
What we'll do is, we'll, we'll get his address and we'll kindly place flyers in his mailbox.
I expect those tomorrow.
Yes, yes.
So there's no burning throughout October?
I believe it's, it opens up October 1st.
Okay.
Yeah. So we say May to October.
And that's an EPA thing.
Yeah.
The state EPA does not, it's a pollution, not really a fire danger issue. It's more a pollution issue that's why it's prohibited.
And then sometimes, depending on, especially this fall, so far it's been pretty dry. So sometimes the EPA will extend that as well. So, you know, sometimes they're like, oh, well, you know, October 1st, I'm allowed to burn. We're like, well, EPA says no. So we get a little pushback, but everybody usually understands.
You have questions? Lieutenant, thank you for your time tonight.
I appreciate it.
Captain, thanks for your time tonight. Gentlemen, enjoy your evening. Fire department's done, we're going to go right to, to code enforcement. Lady's second tonight. He's got nothing to do.
You have a copy of my report. Kind of the same old, same old, but tonight I wanted to talk about the inspections. Cycle two has started and so far we, he has inspected 273 units. Typically what happens is I'll have a day that, you know, I'm doing some things in the office and then I'll say, hey, you have inspections today? So I try to get with him and do three-ish a month, just to kind of see where we, see where we're going. But it seems like this, this cycle.
Joe's car's on fire.
Seems like this cycle.
Give him 30 seconds.
What is it?
Getting the truck out.
All right, cool.
I just wanted to say, I feel like this cycle, the residents kind of know what to expect, the landlords know what to expect. So it's, it seems to be a smoother transition into cycle two. They're real receptive. I mean, Bill's doing a great job. He kind of makes his own hours. He does a couple evenings a month after five, so people that are working, he doesn't, we don't want anybody to take off work or anything like that. So he does a couple evenings a month and then he does late afternoons, lunchtime. So yeah, it's, it's working out really well so far.
Don't we?
Yep.
Don't we have Kentucky League of Cities, a KLC, they're, they're, they're going to look into us on a program like this?
So in November, we are going to be speaking about what we've done here in the city with mental inspections, code enforcement, and how we've improved the housing and stock in our community. As a result, their, their focuses will be on affordable or attainable housing and homelessness. And so they wanted us to talk about some of the innovative things we're doing here with the cities around the, we would be about five cities that are talking about things they're doing innovatively to improve the housing stock and the housing conditions.
That's awesome. Once again, as goes Dayton, goes the Natin.
Any questions?
As an auditor, I'm very curious on what these inspections are all about. Would it be an issue if I tagged along at some point for one of these inspections to see how this goes?
I don't, I mean, I don't have a problem with it.
I don't think it'd be a problem.
I don't know if, I mean.
Yeah, I don't think it'd be a problem.
Get with Bill on his, on his schedule, make sure it works with your work schedule or whatever.
I'll tell you too, I mean, I don't know if you're interested, but like he has some larger apartment complexes coming up and those are over like three, four days. So maybe you could pop in one time, you know, during that.
Perfect, thank you.
All right. Any questions? Nope? All right, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson.
Alex, Alex says it might be concern about doing that with someone who's not performing it as a staff member, so Alex, go ahead.
It's a, issue is it's a privacy issue, the people that are in their homes or rental property could be a concern.
Yeah, that makes sense.
There's a big difference between a legislative and executive function. When you cross that line and turn into, on that particular issue, most of the time would have nothing to do with it, but it's a person's home. And I would have some concerns if someone had a problem. I mean, if someone voluntarily says no problem.
How do you feel about like a vacant unit with nobody, nowhere?
As long as the property owner consents, it's the issue would be the person that would be living here could have a concern. So if you find the property owner and they say, have at it.
Sure.
There's more, there's more problems with it than benefits unless you have permission.
Makes sense.
Yep.
Lawyers.
Sorry.
Thanks, Alex.
What's three lawyers at the bottom of the lake?
Start.
Good start, right? I'm kidding, I'm kidding. I love lawyers. Especially you guys. You guys are my boys. Thank you, Ms. Patterson. Anybody have any questions for her? Oh, look at him. He's very presumptuous. I could call Public Works. Chief Haffill, your report for the month?
Yes. So y'all have my numbers. I tried to do what Councilmember Judd tried to suggest, add a couple months to it to see how we are progressing or regressing, I guess. So it just, it's a three-month period. So you can see things are kind of the same. A little bit up from the month is traffic stops and that's due to, I'm allowing the guys to work some overtime just to do traffic only, which is like three-hour periods. They'll come in and work like, the periods where I'm having problems with. It's kind of a weird time, 10 to 1, and then like a 4 to 7. So stuff like that. When people are coming home from work and the complaints that come in, we kind of narrow down the timeframe when this is happening. So we've been doing some traffic details. Plus, we also got awarded a traffic grant through the state of Kentucky, Department of Highway Safety, so we'll be doing that, starting, I believe, in November. The guys will be working that. So that's why you see a little bit of increase on the traffic stops for the month. I want to give kudos to Lieutenant Colonel Baldwin. We've been able to get a lot of grants through the state. Some of the grants that we were able to get was body armor. We have a body vest grant that we get. But this is additional plating. It's like called trauma plates that you can just throw on top of what you have underneath. Additional for, depending on the situation, high-powered rifles, stuff that the regular body armor might not be able to stop. We were able to get that. We were able to get helmets, ballistic helmets, and we were just awarded shields. So I don't know how many ballistic shields we're gonna get. It's something I've been wanting to get. They're very expensive, somewhere between $3,000 and $5,000 a piece. It would be something that would help us tremendously. If we have to go into the schools and you're by yourself, it's a good tool to have as being the first one going into school shooting. Hopefully, we don't have anything like that or a shooting inside of a house. We have to get into the house. We have shields to help us out. So we'll see how many we get with the grant, and I think we're gonna apply for it again to try to get. Kudos to him and trying to get that done. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, he's very proud of it. I'm proud of him for getting it done. It's something that, kind of, we needed and it's stuff that we need to have, but it's so expensive. These things are well over a couple thousand dollars a piece. So getting these items has been pretty significant for the department. And then the other thing was the boat crews that came through went by very well. I just heard that he was very happy with kind of how things happened with the noise and making sure that they weren't loud in the, you know, hours of the night. So that's something, I guess, next year, try to keep an eye on the schedule and when they have that. Because sometimes we don't know what schedule they have for Queen City Riverboat, so we can't really enforce it till we find out the next day that something happened. So we were ready for this one. Been talking with the company. You know, they had everything under control and a lot of happy residents. They weren't woken at 2:00 in the morning. That is it.
I had a question.
Sure.
What's the grant that you just got for traffic?
It's a highway safety grant.
Okay.
And it's strictly, if you see, if you've been seeing a lot of departments on the interstate lately, Newport's got it, Highland Heights has it. You get awarded a certain amount each department, depending on the size of your department. So 471, AA, 27, you name it, everybody's gonna be out doing it. And we haven't been partaking over the last couple of years because sometimes it was hard to fill. A lot of people didn't have it. We didn't have, like I discussed before, we're not, we weren't really a big traffic area. You know, we only had the avenue and, you know, we didn't have the developments back behind the flood wall that we had before. So we reapplied for the grant, given the traffic issues that we're starting to have. So we were awarded, I don't want to misspeak, but I want to say $3,000 to $5,000.
And what is the goal? Why would they all be on the highway?
It's for seat belts, people not paying attention, using their phones, speeding, reckless driving, stop signs, you name it, any traffic offense you can think of, those officers are gonna be looking. And you will get cited and there's no warning.
Okay. How's it going on Fairfield and Six with speeding or gunning it or ignoring pedestrians trying to cross? I see a lot of complaining on Facebook.
Well, knock on wood, I think, I mean, we haven't heard complaints in a long time. I do think with the purchase of the speed sign, I mean, I was having to change the batteries twice a week and it was getting to be tedious. So we were able to buy a permanent, you know, using the solar. And I think having that there has been slowing people down coming into the city because they're realizing their speed splash and they're saying, too fast, slow down, slow down, you know, and we really, knock on wood.
It's getting better?
Yeah.
Okay.
I've seen people out there having fun with it and trying to run past it, and I mean, that's just kind of cool. People notices it and.
Yeah, some like to see how fast they can get it up to and.
Somebody did 10.
My golf cart tops out at 16. I've done it a couple of times.
You need a new golf cart, sir.
Yeah, I know.
And it's sometimes it's a tool to check your mile per hour on your vehicle. I mean, give or take them.
Mine's pretty accurate. It got me once or twice, I'm not gonna lie. Crap, it's 28.
They're about one or two off, but they're usually.
Well, everybody's speedometer goes up to 160, so, you know, between 20 and 30 is just a small, and nobody looks down at their speedometer anymore. How much did that sign cost? I agree, that's really effective.
It was roughly about $3,000.
Can we get another one for down on Manhattan Boulevard?
That is something I've been talking with Rick about. I do have the old one.
Right.
That I can.
It's battery powered.
It's battery powered, but we need a pole. There's a certain pole that goes, we had a pole down there.
Right.
But when they put this gray building in right here, that's where the pole was.
Right.
It vanished. It disappeared. We looked, we looked, tried to find it. I couldn't find it. We thought it was in a mound of dirt somewhere and we couldn't find it because it takes a certain bracket. We only had, we only have like three of them, I think. So we need to establish another pole down there and another pole. I want to put on D hike to monitor the speed on both areas. That's something I'm kind of working towards, but.
Good. I think they're very effective. Like you said, it's like a reminder, oh my God, I'm going 27. Somebody's watching.
Some people just don't look at their speedometer when they're driving. Because every time you stop somebody, they're like, oh, I didn't realize how fast I was.
Right.
And then with the new cars now, electric and stuff like that, it's like you're flying without even knowing you're flying.
I wanted to address this past weekend, in the whole week, the park, Gillen Park, has been extremely busy. And I don't want to know if you guys have anything in plan for late nights, Gillen Park, after dark? Because, I mean, I noticed last night, I know it's fall break, but after 11 o'clock, there's people out there. And I'm not, you know, I don't want to impede on anyone's fun because it's a great hangout for the neighborhood. But I didn't know if you guys have anything in place for maybe enhanced patrol? Because I know if you guys are patrolling more, it's gonna be a deterrent for people to be mischievous. So I know it's gonna get even busier and busier with all the new improvements. And I don't know if you guys have anything in plan for that?
We try to get down there at dusk to make sure everything's locked up, the bathrooms. So everybody's supposed to be out of the park at that time. But we do have events at the school. Just, I remember my kids, when we had volleyball or basketball, when we came out after the games, there were kids in the park. I'm like, you know, looking at my wives, I'm like, they should all be at home or stuff like that. But it's just runoff from the basketball and stuff like that. We do check the area and try to, you know, push them home and let them know the park closes at dusk. It's an ongoing thing, just a constant thing. And now it's fall break, we just, we just try to get down there a little bit more.
Is there a non-emergency number that we can maybe post down there if we see something, like instead of calling 911, we like have a non-emergency number? And then would you guys be willing to work with the students that just came here that had addressed an issue with the bathroom? Like maybe doing a, you know, a small PSA to say, okay, the students recognize that they want to keep the park clean and working along with conjunction with the police officers, saying, hey, we will prosecute you. And then like maybe put that out there as a PSA to say, we're all working together to make sure this park works good.
Well, the last, I guess, group we had, because it's, this year's been pretty rough on the bathrooms as far as vandalism and stuff like that. It's, I mean, five, six times and it's, every year it's about that amount. It's just, we have to make an example of some. There are good kids down there, but a lot of people don't want to say anything and we can't be down there all the time to monitor it. But we do have the non-emergency dispatch number. I don't know if that's on our city website. It's on the police department's website.
Are the cameras helping?
Yeah, oh yeah. The new cameras are much better than the old ones.
They can't be in the bathrooms, obviously.
Yeah, at least.
So we don't know what they're doing.
We can't see what they're doing in there, but we can figure out, we can figure out who they are.
Who's coming in and out, yeah. But we don't know that till after something has happened, yes.
But your staff locks the bathroom at dusk?
At night, well, giving the, if we have time to do it at that time, if we're not on a call or anything like that, we'll try to get to it, you know, when we clear or have that time to run down there and get it done between calls.
And currently in our ordinances, are all of the parks dusk to dawn closed?
I have to check. I'm not sure.
That's the way it's kind of been. I mean, yeah, there's a sign on Gillens that's closed at dark.
Yeah, I didn't know if it applied to all of the parks, like Sergeant said, but we have lights down there for basketball.
That's a difference, and you also have baseball games that go late, too. So I think Gillen may be different than the other parks.
I think it's like a cruiser going around every once in a while. Like, I'm sure you guys are doing that. I'm saying like.
We constantly go around. And sometimes, I guess, you know, we do drive up into the park and stuff like that, but we've been told not to do that. So it's something the guys are gonna have to get out and walk. We have to park outside and walk in. Usually, I mean, when I was working, sometimes on nights, I'd just have my spotlight shine the whole park, just light it up.
That'll do it. That'll do it.
Usually does. You see that spotlight, it's.
Well, we have the fence down right now, too, because of the construction. So when the new fence goes up, I think that will probably help a little bit. They can close that gate at night and that should keep some people out.
Yeah. The number is 859-292-36.
292?
292-3622. So you don't have to call 911. And we rely on neighbors and, you know, like Jessica and some other people, like you live right here, to call us and let us know, you know, because we can't be there all the time. Might be Assistant Bellevue on something or, you know, sometimes some calls take hours. Could take a while before we can get somebody else to come down.
Talking about people living close, so that they should call. I wasn't gonna narc on these people, but. Our porch looks at that stop sign on the levee and people blow through that stop sign. I mean, we were laughing. We were recording it like, whoo, and like.
Which one is it?
The one on Berry, the.
Flasher?
On Manhattan Boulevard.
Yeah, Manhattan Boulevard, yeah. And it, yeah, I mean, I don't know. I don't know if that's high priority, but wow, if you want to like rake in some cash. It's like maybe 70 out of 100, 78 out of 100.
We try and this is something I've said, we try to be there.
We can see them. We're sitting there with the coffee like, this is wild.
If it ain't Sixth and Berry, it's Sixth and, you know, Sixth and Manhattan. If it ain't Sixth and Manhattan, it's Fifth and O'Fallon, Fifth and O'Fallon, it's Fourth. So we're trying to do the best we can. We can't be there all the time. As you see this month, I think Sixth and Berry, the stop sign, they had 14. And then Officer Spears was pretty on Fifth and O'Fallon. He had 28. That one, so he likes that area.
Yeah, right.
So, but as you see those people, you know, people run that all the time, too. Fifth and O'Fallon's pretty bad.
People are saying, why aren't they not out looking for stop sign runners? And then all of a sudden, I'm driving around town, I come to a full stop, there's a cop right there. I'm walking down the street and I see one of our guys and I poke my head in their window and ask them how they're doing. So I know they're out there doing, doing good work.
And sometimes people know when we're busy.
Yeah.
They know we're tied up. Sometimes they take advantage of it.
A couple things that were said that might be able to tie together here. So the students mentioned like rules of the park and we mentioned posting phone numbers, non-emergency phone numbers around there. What's the plan for signage at the park? Are we gonna include stuff like rules of how to use the equipment? Are we gonna include non-emergency line phone number posted anywhere?
I had not thought about putting the non-emergency line up there, but yes, there were gonna be rules of, you know, no beverages, no.
There are rules at the playground. There already are rules.
Yeah, we're gonna get some new signage, though, yes.
Yeah, we had signage addressing that, but since we take, we took the fencing down, there's that signage that's gone away. But it's usually common knowledge, like no driving in the park, no alcoholic beverages.
We want a new entrance sign, too. The old one is kind of old. It needs to be replaced. So we're working on that.
That's what I try to encourage, so it's just, but we just can't be everywhere. Because we only have 10 to 11 people. Two, two to three on a shift. It's just kind of hard to cover the whole city.
Any comments, questions, concerns for Mr., I'm sorry, Chief Haffill? I got one last one, if anybody doesn't. Just, I know that Sergeant Lynn Kugel had a, you got what? You got married this week?
Yeah, he got married on Friday.
Beautiful white Jessica, right?
Jessica, yeah. He's on his honeymoon right now.
Good, where'd they go?
Well, they did a family trip, the Hocking Hills. He's waiting, yeah, but he's supposed to go to Seattle in the next, I mean.
Excellent. Seattle's awesome.
So kind of like a family trip and then they're going to Seattle.
Good for him. Well, congratulations to him and welcome to the family, Jessica. Thank you, sir, for your evening.
Alright, thank you.
And this is why you go last, because there's so many questions, except for Rick snuck out a little bit. So next on the docket for Director's Report, Rick Lucas, Public Works, please.
Well, everybody knows we got a lot going on. Jay, he's been keeping us real busy.
He'll do that to you.
Yep, and, but I'll let him talk about all the different things that is going on.
We'll talk about now. I mean, guys on the pickleball courts, seeding, you know, you.
We tore out all the old equipment, all the fencing.
And you did the new playground equipment and you leveled it out, seeded it out. Now you've been down on the.
River.
Putting the red bikes in, now you've been on the river, getting it all ready for the big.
And we did get a few curbs.
Yeah, and you painted some curbs. So you guys have been really busy.
We're busy, but tomorrow morning, they brought in a piece of equipment this, today, about where they're gonna start grinding the trees and a pathway through, down and on the trail.
Right.
So I gotta be down there every morning, I guess, around 7, 7:30. I gotta fill out a paper or something. Let them know that they were there and what time they showed up and all that. Mike Jaeger said that. Other than that, I mean.
Well, the good thing is, Rick got a new hire yesterday, so we have a new person on staff and started and we put him right to work, didn't we?
Oh, yeah.
Very hard to do.
And well, we got another one maybe coming.
Yeah, so we have, we have one of the, one of our current staff members is going to be leaving the city at the end of this year and so we need to replace him and we are getting ready to make it all for the one other person, too.
No, everything's going okay. I guess that we're busy and real busy.
Now you gotta try to get your alleys, right?
My what?
Alley, alleys.
We got two of them today. I sent two guys, or sent three guys up to do alleys and I think they said they got two done. And hopefully we can get the curbs finished and all the striping done in the parking lots and Sergeant Park and all that.
Right. That's great.
I have a question. How's the railing that you were fabricating for the steps, how's that coming?
Well, we lost our welder, but I think Jay's got one.
I got somebody we were talking to, so, yeah, we're trying to find somebody. We had somebody at Metal Solutions.
We had somebody at, uh, Metal Solutions, but he's no longer there. He was our contact and our, our person. So, that's gone. So, we are trying to find somebody else. So, I'm working on an angle.
Okay. And then, um, one of those black Iron City garbage cans for, um, when that car took it out in front of the lodge. I think they ordered.
One's damaged from lodge?
Yeah, there's, yeah.
That was one of our, um, the older ones.
The nice ones.
Do we have, we have an extra one around, don't we?
Uh, I don't think we have one of them. We may, but I'd have to check. We got a couple garbage.
Did it get hit by a car?
Yeah, they took out, what did they take out?
Light pole. That's one right there.
Yeah, light pole.
Well, that's when they took light pole out. They did, we checked. Okay.
The garbage can, but it was one of the pretty ones with a steamboat on it.
Yeah.
Do any of those?
I don't know. I'd have to check. I don't think we do.
Yeah, we had one.
Give anything nice? Give anything nice?
We could get a black one.
We got those green ones and, uh, black ones.
I wouldn't do the green one. We want, black is our, our theme downtown.
We have black ones, but the railings coming up the side like, I mean, they're nice. They won't match what we got.
Okay.
Metal Solutions designed the garbage cans with the, maybe we should go back to them and talk about what would.
Oh, they said they'd be willing to make it.
More?
You know, ten more, twelve more, whatever we need.
We'll have to decide. We'll talk with Jared. We have to make sure that they're consistent what we have in our downtown too. So, I've kind of gotten away from that. So, we'll, we'll talk about that.
Okay.
But we did definitely get some more.
And we did get that put in down on the trail today.
Yeah, so they, we do have.
But not the, uh, garbage cans. We ran out of time on that.
So, two, two benches have been installed on the, on the first section of the trail down the river and as well as three garbage cans and they're nice, wrought iron.
And we got four benches down there. The fir- the first two cutouts.
Yeah, four benches, but only three garbage cans right now. They, they're, they're waiting for one more to come in.
They look great too.
Southland Partners has paid for that. The city didn't pay for that.
Feeling good?
I think so.
Yeah. I mean, the guy, the guys, you know, they're, they're coming up with the plans and they're doing most of the work. I mean.
Yeah, they've put a lot of money in there.
My only suggestion is to the left and right of the benches, can I put some tulips?
Put some what?
Tulips.
Tulips.
I think flowers would be nice.
Oh, yeah.
All right. He said yes. Jewelry washing? You can do it.
They did that one year. Um, Mr. Yoder, when he was there, he had us plant these flowers and all those cutouts. River came up and washed them all away.
Right.
Well, let's, let's give me one year.
That's a good problem.
Okay, but, uh.
So, wait, what do you want? Where are the tulips?
Now, Julie was gonna do some, uh, guerrilla gardening.
Yeah.
Uh, down there. She bought all these, uh, tulip bulbs for our yard and we had way too many. And she's like, I'm gonna go down there and put them down there on those, those, those cutouts.
Okay.
And then today we saw the, the benches there and she's like, they put benches where I was gonna put my tulips. And I was like, it's okay, honey. You can still put your tulips there. I'll get it cool with Rick.
I think the landscaping those areas will be something in the future. Once we get the whole trail done, let's focus on that. But right now, the benches are a great addition. You'll see them.
I'm still gonna do my guerrilla gardening. Stop me.
Down there on Thursday, you'll see them. They look great.
Yeah, everything's going. We got a lot, uh, cleaned up really nice.
It looks great. I mean, you can see the riverbank, which you couldn't see before. It's really, really looks good right now. Hopefully you get a chance to come down Thursday for the groundbreaking. You'll get to see what it looks like. It looks really good.
Yep. It's, uh, it looks pretty good down there. Other than that, that's really all I have.
Well, I want to thank the administration and Public Works. I know I've been a pain and a tukus about the curbs being painted and, uh, it's like anything. You put a fresh coat of paint on it, it looks a lot nicer. So, I appreciate the ones you've gotten done. It looks so much better.
When I get them done, then we get started and all of a sudden Jay comes around. Hey, I need this. I need that.
I see where we also actually picked up some parking spots, two or three possibly on the avenue, just by painting over, you know, what had been there for thirty years. So, thank you for getting that done.
We probably picked up two, maybe on Main Street right before you get to Fifth Street too. That was all yellow for some reason.
Well, the bump outs are really, really helped us. The reason they had such long yellow spots was because you had the sight distance. You had to have those. They were blocking, the park was blocking views. But now with the bump outs, you're out there, you can see it. So, we were able to get more parking because we were able to take away those, some of those, uh, yellow lines that were there because giving you the sight, the sight views. So, yeah. And we're, we've got six avenues done. Now we're gonna be working on the side streets, get some of those finished as well. Cleaning up here by the school, we gotta repaint the fire lane and get rid of some other ones there as well.
Yeah, we need it in front of Lincoln School. I, I always see cars just pulled over there in front of Lincoln, uh, that whole block of Fifth Street there.
That's where they line up to pick the kids up.
Yeah, but it should be no parking.
Well, I've never seen anybody out of the car. Oh, yeah. I haven't. I mean, but I don't go down there very much.
Yeah, but I'm saying, I have seen even after hours, people parked on that north side of Fifth Street there. Uh, just the other night when they had an event down there at school, there was two or three cars parked there.
Get out of their car and leave.
Yeah.
Wow.
Probably, probably instead of yellow, we probably just put signage that says, "School drop-off pickup only." No, 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 no long-term parking or something like that.
The other spot is down.
People might be confused that, can I park here waiting, picking up my kid or not? So, we might have to figure that out a little bit.
The other spot that needs to be done, especially before basketball season starts, is on Green Devil Lane from Third Street North up against the school there. Cause I think that should be at least a fire zone, uh, you know, no parking there.
It is. In front, in front, in front of the school, it is a fire zone. It just needs to be repainted.
Right.
The whole thing's a fire zone. Not on, not on, not on the west side, but on the east side.
The school's gonna get painted all the way around until you get to the ad building. Ad Building up to Third is gonna be gray.
Okay.
It don't have to be yellow.
That's on, that's on the west side of, uh, over where the Board of Education Building is.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have some there over by, there's a small little area that comes from the alley behind the school and it needs to be yellow because it's not, not tight enough for fire trucks and buses to get through. But once you get down there, it opens up much larger. We're gonna paint some of that, that yellow gray. So, give additional parking. People work there anyway. So, yeah, we'll, we're, that's, that's the next painting we're gonna be doing.
Yeah, we can, we can do that by hand. And then, are they paving, they're paving Third Street here, right?
I think so, yeah.
And when they do that, we'll put in crosswalks unless they're gonna do it.
But a crosswalk and then we'll also have no parking by the, by the new wall and, and the Green Devil Lane pedestrian area. So, we'll figure that out.
I mean, we're, we're loaded. We got plenty to do.
I hope you get.
The painting's gonna have to come here pretty soon or it's gonna be too wet or too cold.
Leaves coming up. We got leaves coming up.
Yeah.
Sorry to be a damper.
We've already picked up two loads. We just gotta make sure the one house, I'm not gonna bench, that doesn't call every other day to pick up a pile.
So, so, uh, earlier, last, late last week, Rick and I went to the Covington Public Works Building with our architect that's working with us on the design for the new Public Works Building and Rick was salivating all the equipment there, the leaf picker-uppers, the front loaders.
We had a leaf picker-upper. They, they don't work in day. We don't have enough room to get around.
Right. But there was a lot of other stuff that he looked at, that he was like, oh, my gosh.
Make it a lot easier to get things done.
Go to Cincinnati.
Did they have a razor?
Hey, I tell you, Covington, you know, they got a lot of stuff there.
Right. They have a tax specifically to funds.
Oh, yeah.
Five times our.
Well, they got seventy-five employees and, uh.
At least.
Right. I got four. Getting ready to have five, but I'm gonna lose one.
Can we get him a razor?
No, I think the beard's looking good on Rick.
I ain't had time to shave.
That's right. He's working too hard, Joe.
Yep.
I notice you're retired and nicely clean shaven.
Yeah.
Couple times today.
And you know, and guess what? Like I was telling Jay today, I'm the third tallest in our department.
Oh, boy. He's only got four guys. That's right.
I've always been the shortest. I got two guys shorter than me.
Congratulations, sir. Any other questions for Rick? Mr. Lucas, thank you for your work, sir. That closes our department heads for the evening. Brings it up to the city administrative report. Mr. Fossett, sir?
Yeah. So, you hit the, the big things we have coming up, the pickleball and the, uh, and the, uh, equipment dedication and the groundbreaking for, um, Phase Two and Three on the Riverwalk, which is Long River. But the other big news this week is that, okay, I approved our grant for improvements to the levee trail, which is a trail we've had around for twenty-five years, which is kind of narrow and, and kind of old and rundown. Uh, so, we have been awarded a grant, uh, one point one million dollars, almost one point two million dollars. Uh, we have to pay a twenty percent match, but we've already budgeted that. We've had, in fact, we've budgeted it for three years because we've been trying to get this thing approved for three years. Uh, the really nice thing about this project is that no longer we have to go to the end of the trail, uh, the east end and turn around and walk back because we're gonna be able to go down, uh, off the trail now and connect to Mary Ingalls and also create a loop with the new Riverwalk. Uh, so we'll have a three-mile loop in the city now, uh, one point five miles on the river and one point five miles on the levee. It will be awesome.
Is that, I'm sorry, is that gonna be on the inside or the outside of the flood wall?
It's on top of the flood wall.
No, 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 no. The access coming on the east end to get down the street.
You will be on the northern side of it.
So, it's the outside. What do you call inside? To the northern side, going towards the river?
You'll be going on the northern side.
Technically to east.
Between Manhattan Boulevard and the flood wall.
Gotcha. And it, will, will that be a ramp or a set of stairs?
It'll be an ADA accessible ramp.
Sweet.
And then we're also going, uh, our plans are we'll do this in-house. It's created sidewalk off those steps. It's gonna go down and then connect to the sidewalks on, is that Main Street, right there at the back end of, uh, the Jamestown Apartments.
Oh, good.
So, we have a second access. You'll be able to use those steps and we want to get some railings. Uh, we want to talk to our welding person about doing railings there up that, up there. So, people are using that more and more, I see.
Oh, yeah.
And I think once we do the loop, you're gonna have more people using it.
And that allows people from the apartments that come down into the businesses.
Apartments as well as, uh, Kenton, Boone, folks that live in that area as well. So, that the great news is, is that that project we've been working on for three years is finally gonna happen. The big question is hopefully that money will actually get here to the Kentucky Department of Transportation. Uh, there was a story, uh, New York Times about three weeks ago that the current administration is looking at focusing more on motor vehicle type of funding and not the other type of funding. So, I'm hopeful that, you know, I mean, it creates jobs. I'm hoping that it's gonna go through. So, we'll just have to wait and see. But the big hurdle was getting approval and now we need to get the funds from the federal government into the state coffers. So, that's a big deal. That's all I really have there.
That's all you got? Any questions for Mr. Fossett for the night's, uh, administrative report? All right. Thank you for your report, sir. Uh, coming up to the end here, but we got a few more things. Uh, the audience comments. Anybody like to address council administration on anything that crosses your mind? Uh, just state your name and address, please.
Christian Neighbor House, um, lived down at four thirty-nine, uh, Manhattan Boulevard. Just moved in, uh, with my wife a couple, uh, months ago in April. A couple of things. First, I want to just let you guys know that from the back at least, it's very difficult to hear a lot of the discourse going back and forth. I think especially from this mic, I missed a lot of the presentations, uh, tonight. I didn't really hear anyone that spoke from this podium here through this microphone, uh, very clearly back there. Merrick, your, uh, voice is typically pretty clear, but I noticed that you're, you're speaking almost routinely directly into the mic.
I'm attracted.
A lot of other times, maybe people are wavering back and forth and it's really difficult to hear. And I asked, uh, Jerry Huntley, who was sitting next to me. He agreed. Okay. So, I just, that's just FYI. Keep that in mind. I just kind of went back, you know, here, like here that you're probably gonna always get that. You might want to turn this mic up. Several of the other mics, I think, that would benefit if we turn that up.
We'll talk to Jerry about that. He's our, he's our expert.
And I do try to keep it like, like right here.
Yeah. Well, it's good. It's cause I've, I've never not heard you. So, that's good.
So, Ben was a T, Ben was a TV and radio, um.
He used to work on the radio WRFL, eighty-eight, eighty-one.
There you go. Yeah. Well, maybe you can get one.
Didn't we buy these from Jerry Humley and isn't he the one who's kind of?
You could buy the biggest microphone in the world, but if you sit back here and talk about it.
Okay. So, it's not the mics. It's that we are using them wrong. Okay.
Yeah. Like, I'm speaking really close into this right now and, and I'm surprised at how loud it's not. So, at the very least, I think this might, you know.
That microphone?
Could be turned up, yeah.
Okay. Cause this is also then on the video, right? Like, do you ever watch the videos?
No.
Okay. I don't know. It's hard to say. I'll watch it tonight, but a lot of times like hello with the, with the podium. And I'm not sure, we've gone on about this for, I think, three years now about this, like the bane of my existence. But like, how do we right now make this better to where we're.
Speaking of the microphone?
Hold, no, uh, that we know that the people there, we know what their face should look like, that we can be very confident that they're being heard by the audience and also being on the video. Because this just kind of comes on and on like, you, I can always hear you. Can't hear Jay. Like, and then a lot, now that you mention it, it is hard when somebody comes up there and I think, are they not, is it not on? But it's too late and you can't hear. Like, I actually want to watch it tonight and see what those girls said because I had to be late today and I'm hoping that it was captured on video, but I can never can be a hundred percent sure that it is.
I mean, if we don't have somebody sitting with a parabolic mic standing right next to the girls that are sitting back there, unless you're clearly speaking into the microphone, it's not gonna be caught up.
And, and unfortunately, a lot of people don't speak into that microphone. They're just too far away from it and we need to probably ask them to speak closer to it.
Yeah. Maybe we should make that microphone, cause, I mean, it's not, it's not even close to your, to your, your face right now. It's, I, I wonder how you're coming across.
I'm closer than I think a lot of you are very frequently. You know, I, I, I was watching this, you know, tonight and I, and at times, sometimes some of you are here because you're looking to talk to each other and that's fine. You can hear each other across, but it's not getting picked up in the microphone when, when wavering back and forth.
Okay. I have a, I have a cheap solution, Alex. Cause I was told one time that I'm not supposed to touch my phone during a city council meeting because now you have to enter it into whatever, right? But would it be okay if I just asked my husband to sit there in the kitchen and watch that TV and he could text me and go, you can't hear, can't hear the podium, can't hear. I mean, would that be okay? So, I could have live feedback on whether that video was working or not.
It'd probably be better to have him text Jared because he's got the controls.
Okay.
Jared?
Nine times out of ten, it's user error.
Whatever.
I find, I, let me finish, please. I have the floor.
Go ahead.
I agree with you. At the podium, people are usually nervous. They're not used to speaking into it or being able to hear themselves while they're speaking. Uh, and maybe a handheld mic might be a solution to that. I don't know. But maybe just reminding people that if we can't hear that speaker, to tell them to speak up into the microphone.
Right.
Uh, whether it's us up here or someone at the podium, just to remind them that you can hear that speak. I can't hear that speaker now.
Right.
But I can hear that speaker now. So, just remind people, if you can't hear it, just say, can you speak into your microphone? No offense taken.
Okay. I would like real-time feedback on whether that is being heard by the public when they're watching it on the video and it is also being captured on the video for later. Because it's very easy to think that I can hear everything, but they can't. And I don't know that until later when I watch the video and it's too late. So, I think we need a real.
What about lavalier mics?
Hmm?
Lavalier mics.
Whatever. It should work.
That way you don't, you can't escape it.
Yeah. I mean, different microphones have different pickup patterns and, and, and Yeah, I mean, different microphones have different pickup patterns, and, and, and they're, you know, you have the figure eight pattern, or you have, um, there's lots of different, so, and Jerry's probably your guy to talk to about that, Jerry Humley.
We've already done that.
Yeah.
It's really frustrating. We, we've gone round and round about this. Um, I, I don't know. I'm, what do you say right now about Doug watches it every week, every second Tuesday, and he calls Jared, or whatever, and that's real-time feedback, can you hear it or not? Instead of what we feel, or that we think it sounds good. It's hard to tell when we're up here. What, you know, for real, like, how can we fix this? Because we've gone around with Jerry for two years now. How do we fix user error? We fix, at least we know that we are not heard, and then we go from there, instead of being, uh, feeling like it's fine until it's not, and it's too late.
We've said to council many, many, many times, please speak into your microphones, and a lot of times, people sit back like this, and they don't talk into the microphone.
Okay, and yet, and yet, nobody told them to.
I'll put, I'll strap a microphone, we'll do Garth Brooks-style microphone.
We're not really gonna do that.
And then, then we could all, I mean.
Are we really going to do that? I mean, we really should.
Are people really not gonna follow the rules in instructions?
Yes, because obviously we don't. Obviously, we don't. I don't think it's intentional, but obviously, if we can't hear, somebody's doing something.
Is that what you came to discuss, or?
Uh, I have another comment, but I, I mean, I recognize it, the difficulty, so, uh, but the other thing I wanted to, uh, mention, if, if you want me to go on.
I do.
So I, yeah, so I, I think it's great that, um, the grant went through, or it sounds like it might go through, for the levy improvements, and I heard you talk about, um, access from the north side. I didn't quite get where that is.
So currently, on, on top of the levy, when you walk down the levy to the east, it dead-ends at, at the, at the flood wall.
Yeah.
So, and you have to turn around and come back, because there's, otherwise you go, go down the grass. There's gonna be a ramp that goes down onto Mary Ingalls Highway.
Okay, okay.
So you'll be able to basically cross the street and then come down on the trail along the river.
Okay.
And make a loop.
I think it would be great, from at least my perspective, and I think a lot of the people that, that walk up and down, if there was access, more access points by way of either a ramp or stairs, um, from the north side. So right now, there's one set of stairs. It looks like their legacy stairs have been there, you know, for, for a long time, that's, uh, you know, east of Berry. Um, at least one other set closer, you know, down, uh, down this way, or maybe a little further, or even more. I would love to see that be part of that project. I don't know what it takes, I don't know how much the core will allow.
Probably McKinney, we talked about this, uh, Councilmember Neary, uh, talked about maybe stairs at McKinney as well, so it'd be probably the same equidistant stairs as you would have on the, on the west side of.
Yeah.
And we're gonna have a ramp, uh, plan to have a ramp that goes down to the Riverwalk, right at Berry, too. So there will be access right in the middle of the, of the trail, going down.
So what you see now are people, you know, hoofing it over the, the grass, um, which, you know, it can be done, certainly, uh, no, you know, no problem, but it sure would be nice to, you know, have, uh, have better ingress by way of stairs or, or ramp.
Right.
Elsewhere besides the one set, and I'm talking about from the north side, south side maybe as well, but, you know, particularly the north side.
I mean, we're, if we get this grant, uh, funded, that would probably be the perfect time to do that additional steps, so, and, and that wouldn't be that expensive, so we could look at, you know, the budget, whether the budget would allow something like that.
Yeah.
Cause that wasn't included, I don't think, in, in the grant, um, it was just mainly for the top and getting down the other end, so, but I think it's a good idea.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in. Uh, how, how long you been in Dayton?
Uh, April.
Awesome, welcome. Thanks for being a council.
He's got that beautiful modern, more modern house on Manhattan Boulevard.
Oh, is that yours?
Yeah.
That's, that's a beauty, man. Yeah, I, I real big fan of that one. Uh, anybody else in the audience that can make comments? All right, any new business? Counsel?
Remind everyone about Halloween.
Oh, that's a great point. Halloween is gonna be on October thirty-first, oddly enough, between the hours of six and eight, and, uh, the Dayton Green Devils are gonna take the field on Saturday, instead of Friday, this, this, this month, uh, so that we can get everybody out trick-or-treating, so, uh, come on out both nights. Excellent point.
A couple of comments and calls to action from me as well. Uh, one was the, the Heritage Museum's soft opening was successful. I saw Member Neary there as well.
Forty, forty people came.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
For a soft.
Yeah.
It's great.
The official opening would be next month.
Yep. And Member Neary really does, uh, care about paint, cause he apparently painted the walls in there, too.
And the city building, and this building, and the bathrooms.
So.
Pay it, Joe.
The other, the other item is, uh, we just had the River Roots Festival in Cincinnati area. Uh, just like to call out for next time around to see how we can get more engaged as a city in that going forward, especially being we have a steamboat on our, um, logo. So, uh, especially with the Riverfront Commons stretch that's gonna happen along the walkways there, try to figure out a way, whenever, if, if and when they do that, so.
I had to talk to Julie Patrick, uh, in Northern Kentucky, meet NKY, they, they, Covington wasn't even, didn't even have anything, so they were just focused mainly on Newport and Cincinnati, so that was really the only two places that they had, Covington had nothing as well. So hopefully they expand it. I think they had some hiccups this time, some marketing issues, so, uh, but sure, I think it would be great if we could get involved.
Good deal. And then my last comment is, uh, again, feedback from the students today about the sand volleyball. Uh, I know, um, it was brought up that the budget needs to be set for that. Um, I would be open to adjusting the budget if needed be, to get that going, so that they have it used for next summer, so just something to consider.
If you wanna do a little preliminary, uh, figure out what that costs, that'd be helpful.
Sure.
And where?
Yeah.
I think there's a space I think we could do in the park.
Concession, cause we're, we're not adding anything else where the big park is, like, that's all we're putting in, so right there on the backside of the concession would be perfect sand volleyball.
That's what I was thinking, too. Yeah, that's kind of an, although we planted some trees here, we might transplant a tree or two, but I think that's the logical place for.
That would be.
Yeah, I just wanna, I just wanna see.
If that's their biggest concern, we should at least listen.
Exactly. I wanna see that action as quickly as possible, if we can, so, cause that would encourage them to bring more ideas forward, so.
Compared to pickleball court, it'll be relatively cheap.
Yes.
The sand and a net.
Yeah. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other, uh, new business?
Yeah, I'll, I'll apologize in advance, sir. I have three things that I'd like to bring up. Two of them are transportation-related.
Good point, sir.
It was announced recently that Tank is tanking some of its routes. Uh, I've always felt that the number twelve route here into Dayton is one of our biggest assets. Um, in fact, back in the horse and buggy days, it was the number twelve trolley, so that's been around for over a hundred years. Um, I would like to see our, our citizens made more aware that they're, they're open for comment right now. There is a public meeting, uh, I forget the date on that, uh, but they do have a survey on their, um, page, the announcing this. And I would like administration, or if you want me to do it, push it out to all the citizens, please take this survey, cause every person that's on that bus is one less vehicle on Fairfield Avenue and Route Eight. Um, the second thing is also related to transportation and Route Eight. Um, in the Bellevue community news, it was interesting that someone wrote, Alvin Stansbury wrote an article about, you know, being stuck on traffic on Fairfield, and I was waiting for them to blame it on Dayton, but, um, that's the, the traffic situation pretty much from Ward Avenue West, all the way into Newport, in fact, uh, is getting worse and worse, and I don't see any relief on it. I would like to see the cities of Dayton and Bellevue and Newport hold KYTC's feet to the fire to redesign the intersections at Riviera and at four seventy-one. Uh, the, the light adjustment that they've done isn't working. Um, maybe they can make some more adjustments, but there has to be some long-term plan. People are not giving up their cars, and we are getting more people moving in, and, uh, now we have households with three and four cars. It's the number of cars. I'd, I'd like to see all three city administrations get together with some proposals, whether they be roundabouts or whatever, and get KYTC's attention on this, because it's really impacting our quality of life, it's impacting our property values, it's costing commuters time. And if you want, I, I'll be involved in that, because I sat in that for thirty-five years. Uh, the last thing is, is a reminder for council and the mayor, and anybody else interested in doing this gig, uh, filing for the November twenty-six election for council, mayor, PVA, county clerk, et cetera, opens on November the fifth and closes on January the ninth of twenty twenty-six. So the forums are all online. Um, I encourage anybody that thinks they can do this to put their name in the hat. That's all I have, sir. That's my three things.
Um, before we leave, I wanna, uh, thank the city administration, Jay, Jared, uh, Ben, for the job well done on the pickleball courts. I'm gonna reserve a lot of my comments for the next meeting, because just overwhelmed with, with joy and all the emotions that you get whenever you see something for the community come into fruition, so the ribbon cutting tomorrow is gonna be a great thing, and we have the best pickleball courts in Northern Kentucky. Um, I play pickleball every day, and I'm pretty proud to, to say that we have the best pickleball courts and to bring people down here. Like I said, I'm gonna reserve a lot of my comments for next meeting, because just overwhelmed with having a soft opening and already have people coming and playing, and then having another soft opening today, and just having all four of the courts already, um, fielded before we've even done a ribbon cutting. It's just gonna be great for our city, and I appreciate your hard work.
Thanks, sir. I really mean, thank you. That's awesome. Uh, anybody else? New business? I was just, we were checking, uh, Member Neary, I think, uh, brings up a great point about Tank. Uh, the next, there's two more public forums that are gonna be available tomorrow, between two and, there's one in Florence, but we all ain't going to Florence, right? So there's one, two and four at the Covington Transit Center, and between four and six-thirty, the Campbell County Public Library, the Newport branches, which is really close to Dayton. Go and say your words. The next one will be Thursday, so just two days away. Same thing, same, uh, uh, it's four-thirty to six-thirty at Kenton County Public Library, which is over on Scott Street. It's a beautiful library. My grandmother worked there. Uh, I got two quick things to talk about before I will, uh, go toward adjournment. The first one, again, is to remind everybody that the senior luncheon is gonna be on Monday, the twentieth. Please, if you're of age, come and join. If you're not of age, come and volunteer. We'd love to have you serve food. And lastly, is the greatest band in the world, My Morning Jacket, will be playing at Megacorp on Monday, the twentieth. Drinks and refreshments and free food are at my house beforehand. Come see Radiate the Gold. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Member Neiman. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second, member, or a member, Horton, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstains, any nays? Radiate the gold.